I'll call the meeting to order, our Committee of the Whole, on April the 19th, Tuesday. I'll start off by reading the land acknowledgement. That we're pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of Treaty VI and the Métis homeland. We acknowledge all those who share a deep connection with this land. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages, and cultures of all of Canada's first peoples, whether they be of First Nation Métis-Inuit descent, and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We are all treaty people, the peace treaties bind us all. Move us over to number two, adoption of the agenda. Any modifications to the agenda? Thank you for that. Anyone want to move that agenda? Mayor Danilak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So moved.
And I will start the vote on that. Councilman McCook, if you could just read into the, if you could speak into the record your vote, please.
In favor.
Thank you. That carries unanimously. Moving us on to item number three, the adoption of the minutes. Hopefully, folks have had a chance, number three here, to review the minutes. Does anyone care to move the minutes for item number three for the last committee of the whole meeting on March 15th? Councilman Miller.
Still moved.
Any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, we'll call the question on that one.
In favor.
Thank you, Councilman McCook. That carries unanimously. Which moves us over to item number four. And I should acknowledge, I should have acknowledged earlier, apologies, Councilman McCook, who is with us today, just virtually. So we have a full contingent of all of us here at the Committee of the Whole. So with that, we'll move over to item number four, presentation and delegations, four A. Up first, we have community and social development. So I'll have Ms. Williston come up to the front. Put your mic on. And the floor is yours. Welcome.
Am I on?
You're on.
I'm on.
If it's ready.
I'm on, but on mic. So, good evening, members of council. So pleased to be here this evening to provide a bit of an overview on the community and social development department. With me to my left, I have Christy Starling. And Christy is the new supervisor of FCSS and community development. So she's here with me this evening, and I'm happy to have her. She's been in her job for three weeks.
Perfect.
So she's certainly new, but she's a quick study, and she has an extensive FCSS experience from Spruce Grove. So certainly a welcome addition to the team. Am I doing the clicking?
If you can.
I am. Okay, we'll see. I'm in FCSS, I'm not in tech, so. Oh, see, I've already messed it up.
You're 0 for 1, Kim, to start, yeah.
Okay, so let's.
There you go. There you go. You're off now.
See.
No problem.
So there we go. And now I've got the hang of it. So the first page, obviously, details the org chart. And I think what's probably important to highlight on this particular slide is that last year, we undertook a new name. So we were primarily referred to as FCSS. And so we decided to change that in looking at broadening the scope of the department. FCSS has a very narrow mandate, which sort of didn't enable us to meet the needs of the community fully. So what we decided to do is to broaden the name, so hence, community and social development. So under community and social development, we have four service areas. So those service areas are family and community support services, which I think most of you are familiar, is FCSS. We have social development, which is the new service area. We have the youth centre, and we have childcare services. So I'll take just a brief couple of minutes to give you a bit of an overview of those four service areas. So the FCSS service area, as we refer to it, that's the area that is partially funded by the provincial government. It's an 1820 funding policy. And so with that funding policy, there is an act, and there are regulations, provincial act and regulations, that lays out what services FCSS can and cannot provide in a community. So the important thing to remember about FCSS is its primary prevention. Primary prevention only, which sometimes can be a challenge because we do find ourselves stumbling into that area of intervention. Primarily because we're pretty much the one-stop shop in the city to provide social supports and services. So while FCSS is a wonderful program, we have three great social workers that work in that department. The scope is a little bit limited, so it is primary prevention and education. So in that department, we have a social worker that looks after children and families, a social worker that looks after youth, and then a social worker that does seniors in community. So many of you have probably run into one, if not more, of these staff at events that we host in the community. And so those are our boots on the ground, providing services externally to the community. So we provide social supports and services anywhere zero to 100 plus. So it's along that continuum. So our services are providing early childhood development support, assisting families with childhood development needs, parenting needs. We're providing counselling services. Some of that is done in-house, some of it we contract out. Very short term, again, we're more of that primary prevention. So it's not long-term counselling, but it's enough to get people some tools so that they can hopefully, you know, hopefully improve their lives and their wellbeing in some capacity. And then we also provide youth services in addition to the youth centre. So the youth services are generally there to support the schools. In the schools, providing information on healthy relationships, mentorship, that type of programming support. And then there's the seniors piece. So seniors is outreach home support, so going into homes, providing support to seniors of the low income, with some light housekeeping, that type of thing. We also support the Club Beaumont. We provide supports to them, a little bit of funding support, and some programming support as needed. We always take our direction from the community on any of the programs and services, but we always have to make sure we're in that primary prevention model that the province has mandated for us. The social development department of service area, which is the new area, that's the area that we're going to be basically leading the, I would say, more of the equity, diversity, and inclusion supports. This will be the new staff person that council approved in the last budget, which we were naming a cultural inclusion coordinator. We did a little bit of a shift on the job description because it was a little bit too narrow. We wanted to be more inclusive. So the Equity, Diversity, Inclusion Coordinator will be the responsible, the person responsible for creating the framework. And so that's the framework that hopefully is going to guide us, certainly in this department, to look at ways of how we can be more inclusive, whether that's cultural inclusivity, Indigenous inclusivity, whether that's meeting the needs of residents that may be disabilities, LGBTQ+. So that's going to be a little bit of a broader scope. So Christy is going to be supervising. The person that we're hiring, recruitment, actually goes to HR. We've just got the approval this week, so that posting will be coming out. Then we have the youth centre. I think many of you are familiar with the youth centre. Can't speak highly enough about the centre and the support that it provides to the community. So that's youth as well to 17. And the staff there provide supports, whether it's mental health support, one-to-one support. They're looking to build skills in our youth. So whether that's relational skills, whether that's how to have positive relationships within the family unit. So there's a whole range of services, and it's just a fun, cool place to hang out. So I'm quite proud of the programming that they provide there. And then the other service area, which I think you're all familiar with, is childcare services. So that's the 138 spaces. That's early learning childcare and before and after school care. And we also do support other childcare service providers in the community with some of the resources that we share. That programme's been in operation over 40 years. So that's quite a considerable period of time that that has been in operation. So that's a brief overview. So moving forward to, the social master plan is really our guide. So that was developed in 2019, worked with a consultant. And that really sets out the provision or the future of social programmes for the community and supports for the next 10 years. So that plan, many of you, I'm sure, have had a glance at. So the important thing about that plan is that the department leads it, community social development leads it. However, it's collaborative. It needs to be collaborative. So that's collaborative internally with other departments in the organisation, and that's also collaborative with our external stakeholders. So our better health services, a primary care network, our schools, food banks, that sort of thing. So while we lead it, we're just one piece of that. The link that's on the bottom there, sorry, that wasn't very explanatory. I did come and do a report to council last June. So I provided a bit of an update on where we were at, and some of the recommendations, and a bit of a progress report. So that link refers to it. I'm not going to get into too much detail because I've got 15 minutes, and I feel like I've probably used 10 already. So, you know, certainly if there are questions as they relate to that report, please feel free to ask me. Some of the updates from that report that I just wanted to highlight is the tremendous work that we're doing with Action for Happiness campaign. So some of council here will remember, you were asked to sign a pledge, Action for Happiness pledge, which was earlier in 2021. Well, we have really incorporated that through the organisation. Monthly, we produce a calendar. That calendar is shared at our organisational meeting. Some of the departments use it on looking how they confer their mental health and wellness within the organisation. And obviously, we look at how we confer the mental health and wellness externally. We have a group that runs, that one of the staff runs. And we're seen as a little bit of a leader. Although the movement started in England, we were the first in Canada to adopt that. And as you see, Muffin Land, October Saskatchewan are all on board. We've been providing support to them. The staff meets with them every couple of months, so doing some great work in that department. I think everybody understands mental health and wellness is key to a healthy community. And COVID has just really, really made it challenging, more challenging than it was pre-COVID. So that's pretty significant. We hired Christy here. We hired what we're now, this presentation was done before we did a name change, but the EDI coordinator, which is currently underway. We're working again collaboratively. I mentioned here, planning, doing a lot of work on affordable housing for Beaumont. The affordable housing strategy, we worked hand-in-hand with planning, the strategy that was presented to council, and the subsequent recommendations. We have a heavy role in that. The Tectico programme that I know certainly Laura has mentioned in her reports to council, that actually came out of our department, that was an FCSS initiative. The youth centre is currently working on how to address the impact of social media on our youth. It's a huge, huge issue that I think we're all struggling with, but youth typically with peer pressure. There's lots of complexity around that, so certainly working on that. And then we're currently working with our communications department on an FCSS awareness campaign. I always say, certainly the FCSS is the best-kept secret, and but we need to let the community know that we're here, we're here for them, so doing a little bit of work on that. So stats and fun facts, I thought I just, there's so many stats that we collect provincially, but I thought I'd just highlight some of the stats over the previous year. 2021, we all know, challenges with COVID that really impacted childcare. Childcare successfully stayed open in 2021. We had a few close calls where we had staff, and we had numerous children that did contract COVID. But, you know, Jodie's a magician, she managed to sort of pull staff together and juggle. So we're very proud of that. And on top of that, they also had a relocation. There were some renovations on top of it that they had to deal with. So that added to some challenges, but it was good. Parents were happy, kids were happy. The early childhood development programme, we moved to a bit of an online, more of an online format. However, there were a couple of opportunities to do like freezies in the park. So that was reaching out to families with young children. The Kids Have Stress Too Facebook series, that was a partnership with Eaglemont Church. So we had 800 views, which in our world is quite a lot of views. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but for us, certainly is. You can see there were numerous programmes, almost 400 kids participated in some of the other groups. The youth centre, despite the up and down of COVID, there were 1,696 in-person visits, which is pretty significant. So whether that was group, one-to-one, we did online programming, mental health referrals, you can see the stats. In fact, in 2021, our memberships increased at the youth centre. Youth were feeling that need to connect with their peers and with others. So we were a little bit surprised by the increase in memberships, but nonetheless, it's certainly positive information. One of the things, I'm not going to go for everything here, but one of the things I want to highlight is the photos here that you all see. So isolation is a huge issue for seniors, for many groups, but particularly seniors. And so one of the staff saw these, I'll say semi-life-like pets. So you see the cat and you see the dog. And so she purchased these two pets, and we put out a call for seniors, who wants to adopt a dog and a cat? And we got quite a few, I would say, almost like resumes of why they were the best seniors. And so we did, we selected two seniors. And so the lady at the bottom, it was really, really nice because she'd recently lost her cat, recently lost her cat, living alone. And for her, actually was going into a little bit of depression as a result of COVID and the isolation. And so she adopted Pearl. And Pearl meows, it purrs. If you do not talk to this thing, one of the staff had it on their desk for a few weeks before we launched this. And if you don't talk to it, it meows. So this thing would meow at one of the staff, and then it starts putting its paw up because it wants attention. So it was actually quite entertaining for the staff, certainly in FCSS. But the seniors, because Dinah keeps in touch with the seniors, you have no idea how these pets have impacted positively their mental health. I mean, they know they're not real, but just that companionship, having this pet on their lap, who they can pet, they can talk to, it's a bit of a game changer. So I think this is something that we might see more of in some capacity, but very well received. I know other municipalities' FCSS departments are looking at this because it's quite a success. So, yeah, so if you want to adopt a pet, nowhere to come. So moving into the upcoming projects and initiatives, you can all see, I would say that our focus certainly for community social development is the affordable housing piece, working very closely with Laduke Regional Housing on that, the age-friendly strategy. We've hired our staff. We're looking at a legacy project, but stay tuned, that's going to be an exciting one. That is going to be starting pretty quickly here. That's an intergenerational project. Got lots of creative ideas around that of how to engage the generations. The impact on social media for the youth centre, and then the development of framework, which I mentioned. And then obviously, we're going to be looking at putting together the Childcare Cost Recovery Plan, which will come back to council later, later this year. And we're getting, just a few successes to touch on. I would probably say the biggest success for our department during COVID was that even if we moved to online programming, our groups were always well-attended. A little bit of fatigue, I would say, towards the latter half of the year, but our attendance was always good. The youth centre remained open when it could. Childcare was always open. So I think that was, that was pretty much a success for certainly this department. One thing to highlight is, the last bullet, the Laduke Income Supports Office, closed during COVID. That was only open for essential intake. That was detrimental to communities such as ours. Absolutely detrimental, bad, bad decision. But anyway, with a lot of advocacy work through FCSS, through the Intercity Forum on Social Policy, and our FCSS provincial people, we were able to get the province to reverse that decision. So that was, that was a lot of advocacy. However, I did put that on the success page. It should really be on the challenge page because they didn't open to full capacity, to pre-COVID capacity. So you still can't walk into the office and get an appointment and see somebody. So the office is technically open, but it's not open in full-service delivery. So you have to make an appointment. Appointments are taking two, at least two weeks to get an intake, and then determined on the intake over the phone whether you can actually get an in-person appointment. That is not what we wanted, that is not what we advocated for. So it's on a success, but it should really be on the challenge page. So we have, we have more work to do there. Some of the other challenges are the not enough affordable housing. Talked about that before in reports to council. Certainly the food security, although that's changed with the recent development of the Food Bank looking to come to Beaumont. So that's, that could really go on the other page, see a flip-flop for us. It depends on the day as to whether it's a challenge or an opportunity or a success. So overall, these challenges are not insurmountable. There's a lot of advocacy that goes on, and they're not unique to Beaumont. So I can reassure council that these are challenges that other communities are facing. A lot of them are actually provincial. Obviously, the Food Bank is a little bit unique to us. So, yeah, so our department is really trying to champion and further certainly some of these challenges. So, yeah, I went over 15 minutes, but any questions?
No problem, and always give you more than 15 minutes, Kim. Always surprised at how much, when I see your organisation chart, how effective you guys are. I don't know how you get all that done with that, with that small group that you have. So thank you for that. But what we'll do is we'll open it up for questions and comments for the team here in front of us. We'll go with Mayor Danilak first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate that. Ladies, thank you for your presentation, always informative. Quick question, the Beaumont Legacy Project. Can you tell me in two minutes or less kind of what that's about? I know a little bit about it, but give me the high level if you wouldn't mind, please, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Certainly, the chair for you to, Mayor Danilak. That project, we just received funding, federal funding from the New Horizons Grant. So that project, which they just, they just met last week. So basically, we are, we are getting seniors and children from the early childhood childcare centres, not just municipal, but the private providers. We are getting them together to share story, to share music, to share culture. So these are going to be monthly meetings between, and youth are involved as well, between our young people and our seniors. To allow the seniors to share their heritage, their culture, their kind of learnings and their experience with our young people and vice versa. This is all going to be captured through story and through photo. Those stories and photos, are they going to be put in a book? And that book is going to be given to the seniors. So we're putting a call out to seniors. We're putting a call out to residents, families. And we are, we are getting quite a lot of response already. People, families are interested, how can we be involved? What can we do? We think this intergenerational piece is important. It's good for the community, we can all learn from each other. And so it's early, we just had a first meeting, and, yeah, stay tuned. It's going to be pretty exciting for our community, for sure.
Thank you. Tessa Barnhart.
Thank you very much, and so glad to see some of the expansion that has already taken place. Hate to turn a crisis into a good thing, but seems like it didn't hurt. I hate that there was lots going on and the increases are there. So definitely justifies the expanded dollars. I could probably talk to you all day, but I'm trying to pick which question to follow here. I think the one that's mostly on my mind or opportunity, support for seniors as well as people that are isolated due to health reasons. Have we explored and can you help explore further tele-support for medications and doctor visits and things like that? Is anything on the horizon with you, with senior support?
From your chair to councillor Barnhart, we haven't explored telehealth specifically because, again, we've got to stay in our FCSS lane, right? So we can't go too far into health. However, there is a regional group of FCSS coordinators, seniors coordinators, and they're looking at regionally how we can support seniors in their homes. As you know, we have the Outreach Home Support Programme. So that's for our lower-income seniors to provide some support, and it prevents a little bit of isolation. So I would say to you, we're always looking at creative ways of how we can connect with our seniors. And the, I guess the challenge that we find there is, if those seniors are connected through, say, Club 55+, and they're already connected, that's very simple, but it's connecting with those seniors that aren't. We are getting access to some of them through the Community Voluntary Income Tax Programme because that's a programme that we also provide to the community. So those are the seniors that sometimes we don't, they don't come to our programming. We don't connect with them in the same way. But once we get them in the door on a programme like that, then we're all over it. Like, what can we do? What else do you need? So I would say not specifically maybe telehealth, but other supports.
So when you say in staying in your lane, I understand that. I think providing support to people in their homes is very preventive. So kind of hoping that that does fit in that lane. But I'll leave that to you. I know you'll, you'll be exploring that further. And last one, if I may, Chair, just to ask. Could you give me an update, if you have it or at a later date, on the newcomer welcoming project and what we're doing? It's in the social master plan, and maybe that's coming at another date.
Yes, I can provide you an update. So of course, when that was brought to council and we had those conversations, that was COVID. And so that presented some challenges for us. We did draft a letter for the mayor to welcome, to welcome newcomers. But then elections happened, and hence new mayor, and new position. So the EDI coordinator, new position. So that's going to fall under their portfolio. So we realised that the letter was good, and that's good, but we think there's more that can be done in that area. So that's going to be part of the role of the EDI coordinator.
So it hasn't fallen off the list? It's still there?
It will not fall off, I can assure you, it hasn't fallen off. So I think there was COVID and elections.
Okay, okay, I can live with that. And I'll probably ask for an update at some point in the future. Thank you very much, Chair.
Good answer. Managed that politically very well. We'll go to councillor Van Newkirk, and then I've got councillor McCook coming in online, and then councillor Miller.
Yeah, thank you, through you the chair, two presenters tonight. Happy to see two of you sitting there, that's awesome. The fruits of some labour for some budget asks, some approvals and some hiring, and I think that's just great. I've been the broken record saying, please ask for more, please ask for more, and you did, and here we are. So thank you for that. One of the things that I've commented on in the past, and I still think there's some work to be done, is around the who is your team, what services do you provide, how do we access, where do we access and such? I think that the group that knows who you are and accesses the services through your team I think that the group that knows who you are and accesses the services through your team is well-served and, and served very, very, I don't even know, well. And but what, what I'm concerned about is that the community at large might not know that. And when I look through the initiatives for this year, I don't see any communi- communication or community advocacy type initiatives in there. It is very much a, a to-do list that's very focused on things. But just wondering how you might, uh, how you might be able to weave in some, here's who we are, here's what we do, here's how you find us, messaging throughout twenty twenty-two, uh, for the community at large.
Your chair for you councillor Van Newkirk, um, yeah, you raised an excellent point. It's always been a challenge, certainly for FCSS, to, um, to get that voice out, to be heard, for people to be aware. So we did start last year, but this is before the department kind of expanded out. But we did start working with our communications department on a campaign. And so we're actually meeting at the end of the month with our, our communications person to look at that campaign and how we can start messaging that out, um, through whether it's events, social media, how we can best get that word out, because you, you, you're right. You don't know you need us till you need us. And then sometimes even then it's a bit of a struggle. So we have work to do. That was identified through the social master plan. We knew it. But I think this is the year now we've got a communications plan, that I think we can really target some resources and some effort into creating that awareness that, yeah, we, we desperately need. And not just FCSS, but the broader department, of course, as well.
Yeah. And I think that the, the renaming of the department is something that you can, uh, champion or use to push some of that out too, right? You know, community and social development, the FCSS just kind of slides off the tongue, right? And people have heard that, but they, you know, they might not have heard of community and social development and telling the story of how that came to life, right? So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We'll go to councillor McCook.
Thank you. Um, I will try and keep this very short. Thank you, Kim, for the update and the presentation, um, on your department. Your department is certainly an integral part of the wellbeing to our communities. So, um, it's always great to hear from you guys. Um, I really love the story of the seniors and the pets as well. So thanks for sharing. I'll kind of roll in my questions two in one. So did you see an increase in services, um, in the past couple of years due to, to the pandemic? And also can you expand on your thoughts surrounding, um, the needs of additional mental health supports that we could see in our community? I know we have Action for Happiness, but, um, anything else in addition to that?
Bruce to the chair, to councillor McCook. Um, sorry, this is really awkward with you on the screen, but now I can. I, I would say in answer to the first part of your questions, um, what do we see in increase in services for in twenty twenty-one? I know I sound like a broken record. It was mental health and that sense of isolation that residents were feeling. And it wasn't just seniors. Seniors were obviously one, um, target group. It was, it was young families. It was, it was families who normally would go to some sort of, um, playgroup, support group. That couldn't go, um, because of the distancing regulations, the masking. Little ones in masks, we all know, wasn't overly successful. So isolation was a huge, huge factor. And it was like, how do we connect people that are feeling isolated? The mental health piece, the fatigue, we did a lot of groups. We did a lot of groups quite successfully. I would say the first year of the pandemic and the first half of twenty twenty-one. But people started, started to get fatigued with that. Um, so we got creative. We created kits. We created mental health kits that families could come and pick up and take home and do these kits and interact with their families. So we had, we had to get sort of creative with things like that. So that was, was probably one of the biggest things that we identified. And then the second part of your question, you touched on mental health. Mental health, um, oh, it's, 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 it's a big, it's complex, it's big. It's so layered with many other, um, issues, whether that's some addictions issues, other health issues. So, so there's, there's a lot of complexity in that. And so that's always a bit of a challenge for us because again, primary prevention. So we partner well with Alberta Health Services for mental health. They offer a lot of programming. We've also offering a lot of groups. It's a struggle because I would say that the resources are not there. Like the mental health therapists just aren't there. The wait lists are like six weeks. The intake process is onerous. So FCSS is, is triaging a lot of this because we're not mental health therapists for social work. So again, um, you know, have to distinguish between the two roles there. But, um, we, we continue to have people reach out to us. We will triage until we can get them into sometimes more formalized help. Or to groups. We run anxiety and depression groups. We ran three last year. We're going to run three or as the demand, um, requires this year. So the Action for Happiness is just one piece of that puzzle. And that's really the education piece to say, don't wait till you're in crisis. Like there are supports available. There are tools available. Action for Happiness is one of those tools. It's a great way to gather people through the groups that we provide. So we're trying to, again, is that, that kind of that prevention piece. Please like access resources and supports before we get to crisis. And we don't have the answers. It is, it is so multifaceted, multi-led. All I can tell you is we don't have enough resources. It's, it's not Beaumont. Provincially, we don't have enough resources. And I think until we really address that at a provincial level, we're always going to be, um, you know, behind the eight ball, doing what we can. Um, and with the small team we've got, we, we do what we can. I would, I would say to you, there's more work. There will always be more work. Yeah, it's, it's a challenging one for sure.
Thanks, Kim. And I, yeah, I think you guys do a great job for sure. And I think to councillor Van Newkirk's point a little bit, um, just getting a little bit more awareness in the community as well as to what you guys do and the great work that you do. Even some of the, the things that you just mentioned, I wasn't aware of. So, um, I think it would be great to get some of that out in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. Thanks, councillor McCook. Councillor Miller?
Thank you. It's, uh, nice to meet you face to face. I haven't had that opportunity yet. So hey, thanks for coming. And, um, this was a great, uh, a great presentation. I have, like I, just like councillor Van Newkirk and Catherine mentioned, there's so many things that I wasn't even aware of, um, myself. And, um, it's really, I, I would like to know more about it. So I'll have to definitely dig more into what is available for our community. One thing I was wondering about, um, because I hear a lot of concern, um, regarding mental health support and, you know, the senior thing with the pets was, was absolutely great. That was, that was wonderful. The youth center is wonderful. What can you maybe advise for children that are younger than the age of twelve? And I, I hear a lot of it from parents, um, in the community. They all have young kids. And, you know, this has been a detrimental time for a lot of the adults. The kids have been super resilient, but unfortunately now that the adults have went through this, it's just kind of a trickle effect down to the home life and, um, how that affects them. So. What kind of supports are there for the younger children?
So the chair for you to councillor Miller, it's tough. So once you, once you get below the age of twelve, um, the schools aren't really equipped to deal with children. So we're finding, because we're co-located between two elementary schools. So I'm very often getting their resource workers or even their, um, even their principals coming and saying, oh my gosh, we've got a family that's really struggling here. And so, um, we're like, tell them to come see us. Tell, tell them to come see us and meet with us. So I, I would say to you, the, the, the staff certainly have training in the child development piece. So I, I would encourage people to come and see us. Um, we can't provide therapy, but we do have some great programming. We have, we have Talk Club, Children in Change, which are our programs that we go into the schools and we provide support. So these kids are identified through the teachers. So the teachers will identify, you know, like a handful of kids, generally about six to eight kids. One of the social workers will go in and they'll talk to them. They'll help them understand. Because, because they hear the word mental health, there's no concept of what that means. They just know that, you know what, then they're not getting along with their peer group, they're struggling with their parents. But they can't necessarily put wording to that. So we, we, that's where we can come in and help, help them to articulate that. Generally through feelings, right? We, we're very much from a, a sort of a feelings approach of how does that make you feel? How are you feeling right now? Um, so that's, so certainly that we can do that work. If we start getting into therapy or a therapeutic approach, we do have to refer into mental health. And they have a children's, a specific children's mental health therapist that works out of Beaumont. Um, and so then we refer if it's specialized. If there are assessments needed, there can be referrals to psychologists. Depending on the age, there's the play therapy approach. There's the, you know, the animal equine therapy approach. So it, 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 it's, it's really dependent on the situation. But we always say, come to us first. We've got some tools and tricks that you can use. If, if they work for you, that's great and we can help support you. Um, we will do that. We also have the FRN, the Family Resource Network, which is actually a contract held by the Duke County, but they provide services to Beaumont residents. So they will actually go into, into the home and they will provide in-home support. So they'll look at what's going on in the home, do a bit of an assessment. So that's also another very valuable resource that Beaumont residents are definitely accessing, definitely, definitely accessing. So, um, I would say to you, we do have supports available. Depends how it's kind of specialized and we might have to refer.
Right, yeah. No, that's wonderful to hear. And I think that is exactly the information that, um, I think needs to kind of be like councillor Van Newkirk even said, just a little more communicated. Because those are great resources and they're highly needed right now. So, um, thank you so much. I, it's really great to meet you both.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I see another questions here. Um, we do need a motion, um, to, to accept this as information. So I don't know if we'll put that up on the screen. So if someone wants to, to move this. Councillor Miller, you're already ready, so I'll ask you to go if that's alright.
Sure. Uh, I move that April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, Community and Social Development Overview Report be received for information.
Call a question on that. In the favor? That carries unanimously. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, and welcome, Ms. Starling here to, to the team. And if I take, uh, a lot of good information away, um, my, uh, my kids have been bugging me for a cat for a long time. Two dogs isn't enough. So I might need to follow up with about Pearl and see what we can do there, but.
Because you don't need a litter box.
Exactly. Um, I'm quite encouraged by that. So thank you very much. Really, really good information. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Alright, that moves us over to, uh, four B, uh, Department Update, Corporate Analytics and Technology. Ms. Blazer Huda coming up to the front here. Welcome.
Hello, everyone.
And the floor is yours.
Good evening, Chair, committee and the public. My name is Jennifer Bolsoh Huda. And I'm before you today to provide some context to one of the newer departments, formalized in July of twenty twenty-one, Corporate Analytics and Technology, or our common name, CAT. Our, our, I, our, good segue, Kim. Our department is part of Administration's Internal Services Division led by Mike Dowler. As a director of this department, I want to thank you in advance for allowing me the time today to deliver our department's overview and update. Our ORC structure consists of nine full-time employees, two summer students and a third-party contracted help desk. Our team of professionals understands the challenges and limited resources available when delivering technology projects or completing daily operational tasks for stakeholders by embracing MIT's four A risk framework. Availability, access, accuracy and agility. By availability, we keep systems up, their business processes running and recover quickly from any kind of interruptions. By access, we ensure appropriate access to data and systems. So the right people have access and the wrong people don't. By, by accuracy, we provide a, sorry, we aspire to provide correct, timely and complete information that meets the needs of our stakeholders. By agility, we are able to make necessary business changes with appropriate cost and speed. The team on this slide manages these risks when delivering solutions to the organization. Beaumont's growth means increasing complexity to our department. As the city moves towards full urbanization, the complexity of issues the city deals with will also increase. Accordingly, the importance of integrated planning and coordination between departments and agencies will grow. Our department has eight programs to support administration in this complex environment as we deliver required services to our residents. The IT infrastructure, it's the physical assets to provide internet connections. IT operations and help desk, as it says, we manage functions for end users or that end-to-end connection. Asset management and other programs, we are the data caretakers of the attributes of our owned assets. Our security management is another program where we secure assigned privileges to access city software and data. The Continuous Improvement Program, new this year, maximize value through the implementation of efficient and effective processes. Our systems development, we finally have an in-ho-, uh, an in-house resource. So we can provide real-time, on-premise resource to assist in system updates to our end users. Our GIS services, it's our digital mapping services for our city-owned assets. And the last component that we deliver is our project management for any business solutions or technology projects. Our growing community, changing demographics, increased security concerns, age of current implemented technologies and resident service delivery expectations are outpacing administration's ability to implement and maintain electronic service functionality within the existing technologies and resources we have. Corporate Analytics and Technology Department's twenty twenty-two initiatives are aligned to improve these noted areas of concern. Before we move to those initiatives, we want to take a moment to actually review our technology architecture. This slide is to help provide a visual context to that breadth of skills and layers required to effectively manage a complete technology environment with integrated business solutions. The base is the infrastructure layer or the foundation, noted here in blue. And the majority of our department's capacity has been focused in the, in this area over the past eight months. As in any foundation, it must be robust and reliable for all other layers above it. We have been repairing, upgrading and installing absent foundational components such as networks, switches, cables, servers, routers, et cetera, all to the city IT infrastructure. In addition, in this layer, we're developing parallel work in, in developing the appropriate directives, policies, security, data governance and disaster provisions to protect our assets, both physical and informational. That is also under weighed here. The stabilization of this foundation layer actually began in twenty twenty-one and continues to evolve as funds are being made available through budget approvals. So thank you. The next layer up, the business solutions or systems depicted in green. It continues to be an area of risk that we are managing as we are endeavoring to minimize the number of corporate business systems to avoid future information and process silos. As an example, we are currently developing the e-permitting system for planning. It is fully integrated into our existing asset management system. The same program has the potential to host fire inspection. The same program has the potential to host fire inspections, lock grading inspections, weed management, compliance, business licenses and more. With proper workflow mapping and resource allocation, this could become a significant enterprise system at Beaumont. It is in this layer that we actually activate our department's continuous improvement service area, which will conduct current state and future state analytics prior to formalizing a solution or engaging our technical experts. It's basically our business insights aligned with tech. So as we continue to move up, things change. The red layer, the next one up. This is really the successful integration of our business systems exchanging data automatically. Using integrated technologies or programs, and the examples are listed there, some that we have. This area is imperative to produce quality data, enabling predictive data modeling and supporting our data-driven decisions for both administration and council. A key objective in this layer is the reduction of data duplication errors, reduction in cost of maintenance of this data. In short, this architectural layer is our electronic data exchange for human interaction using data visualization and data analytics. The final and top layer is the user experience or citizen-facing digital solutions to transact with the city, to gather information and to submit requests. Council has expressed the desire to improve this user experience to administration. However, we still have some foundational pieces that are absent and are being addressed in the next three years. Technology does, it underpins many of the service functions and will be an essential component and still is to influence a customer-centered digital experience. The next slide will provide our fiscal timeline and noting the preparation for the Folsom Solutions in the coming years and to support the improvement of our citizens' user experience. As we continue to implement fully integrated solutions involving business process redesign, data design, solutions integration, corporate analytics and technologies proposing some business system initiatives which will support the digital service deliveries to meet our needs and our residents. Each of these initiatives are major transformational projects which will have an organizational-wide impact. Our continuous improvement service area, complemented with some of consultants, will be conducting many of the current state and future state analytics with internal and external consultant or stakeholders in the coming months. This information will be utilized to develop the strategies for the projects listed in bold on this timeline. The financial systems review coming to council in Q three. The digital master plan, the customer service strategy, seeking approval from council to move to open data in Q four. Other projects noted on this timeline not bolded address foundational infrastructure and data integrity enhancements required to address deficiencies and end-of-life issues. The city cannot continue to rely on existing systems as ongoing use of these technologies will increase corporate risk, reduce staff productivity, delay the release of various electronic service options and force allocation of staff resources toward the ongoing support and maintenance of these outdated technologies or business solutions. As any municipality, all departments are reliant on core corporate services, our HR, our finance, IT, communications, legal and ledge. But HR and financial processes, in particular, are critical business functions in discharging their responsibilities. Despite some of the system implementations we've done, many manual operations inhibit city departments' abilities to move at the speed they need while balancing the corporate controls. Again, in Q three and in Q four, administration will be providing reports to council, recommending options to operate in real time and in doing so, enhance our citizens' user experience with these transactional activities. This last slide highlights current challenges and successes. I've already mentioned throughout presentations, some of our challenges and with the corresponding solutions being implemented. So the two that are listed here are only our Q ones that we've been managing, our data migrations from legacy systems and our IT infrastructure. Kind of want to end on positive, so I want to just talk about our successes. And we have five since we started and and to date to twenty twenty-two. The programming of an internal service request tracker for communications was completed. The release of version two of the project Beaumont Dashboard, which is basically, uh, taking into consideration the public engagement and resident feedback we received. The launch of an employee intranet, uh, the gateway. It's a centralized internal communication platform that will be worked on through the years. The continuation of incorporating learnings from the pandemic response. We've been upgrading network speeds, adjusting hardware for administration, moving systems from on-prem to cloud-based. And the most recent, I think last week, um, we were accepted into the federal government-funded cybersecurity pilot project from municipalities. We have access to Canada's foremost experts in cyber prevention as we develop our own cyber program. Quite excited about that. That's all.
That's all, eh? Thank you. Thank you very much. A lot to cover here. Um, I I will just make a a quick point around the the project dashboard two point O. I I think that that program is a huge success. I think that's cut down the number of phone calls and emails that I get by half. Um, just being able to point to that, so residents are looking at that. I'm I'm sure you're seeing the analytics on your side, so thank you for that. Um, I'll open it up here for for questions and comments from from the team. Counselor Tessier, first up.
Thank you and thanks for the presentation. Yeah, some pretty high-level information there, so appreciate it. And just a couple of questions. So, you know, I find as council, we're we're sending a lot of people through the service portal and it's it's honestly difficult to find unless I send them a link. Is there any, are we able to edit the website at any point? Or is that future upgrades coming or just your input on that?
Yeah, through your chair to Counselor Tessier, there's actually on the front page of the website, there's a little bubble within, it's a direct link to the service Beaumont. So it's actually on the homepage. But yeah, but to even go further with the proposed changes to our website design, that's going to go with. We're going to make sure that's going to be something, uh, as and a few other things that we're going to be announcing. But there is on the homepage of Beaumont, there's about four bubbles. Um, that, uh, and it says service Beaumont there, right-hand side.
I'm sure I'll be able to find it. Um, perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. And just second question, so I've noticed like our GIS mapping, I know, I know I've been on it before previously on a on a city of Beaumont computer and just noticing other communities having access to that, to the public. Is that something that we're looking at keeping access to the to the residents?
Um, through your chair, Counselor Tessier, what we're doing is we need to put in our bylaw and the open data. Once we do the open data, we'll open components of those data sets there. Um, over the last two years, we've been reconfiguring our architecture or our tables so that we will not give out sensitive data. So that's been in the works. So when we launch our request or a report to council, that is one of the main things we're looking at doing. Um, it'll also increase the availability for developers to access some of the, you know, below-grade infrastructure, things like that. So it opens up a whole different world for us, so yes.
Perfect, I look forward to that, thanks.
Yeah.
Counselor Van Newkirk?
Uh, thank you, I won't tip my hand and say this is one of my favorite presentations because I thoroughly enjoy them all, but, uh, I love the analytics side of things and the and the point and the particularly the part that you guys have made a a position of continuous improvement. Um, you know, that just shows the dedication to, you know, continually identifying opportunities to think differently, do differently and and make it come to life because otherwise that just happens off the corner of someone's desk and that gets hard. So, um, just I'll stay on the service Beaumont theme a little bit. Um, I think it was, it's it's kind of been an an evolution of a of something no one knew existed to something that annoyed people, to something that people were directed to. And then they're starting to get action from and then it and then all of a sudden the community flooded it, uh, with, you know, snow and ice concerns and such. And then you guys were able to dig out of that hole, no pun intended. And then, uh, past that, now we're sitting here waiting for, you know, rains to, you know, make the grass grow and then you guys will have a hard time to keep up or or the next thing that floods that serves request tracker. So, um, all in all, I think is, uh, it's it's a good tool. Uh, but what what I would look for is for a little bit of that continuous improvement there. Um, and I think there's a few little things you can do, you know, particularly with the bounce-back emails or something, just to help guide people a little bit better. Um, you know, your issue is this, you would talk to this department, right? Because some of the feedback I've got on the bounce-back emails is that if you have a concern, call us. And there's like six emails and six, um, phone numbers and stuff there, right? So I think that's, uh, but all in all, I I I think that that is, I don't know how city administration feels about that, but it's it's been a good place for council to continually direct those types of concerns. So I I definitely appreciate it. One of the cloud-based web app tools that I didn't see mentioned in here and, uh, just wondering if it's part of the digital transformation is around how you handle your internal safety services. Um, you know, there are programs out there that take all that into an app. Is that wrapped up into here somewhere?
Uh, through your chair, Counselor Van Newkirk, we have actually an inter system, we call it Biz. Um, and we also have two apps. We have our SDSs online available to internal staff as well as any kind of incident reporting online available. So both of those are internal programs that staff do have access to.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, that's kind of what I expected. And then, uh, just to follow Counselor Tessie a little bit about the GIS mapping and the and a plug for a a new layer, uh, that would be awesome to have playground and school zones. So we don't have such a mess of signs in the next election. People had a real challenge with that. So imagine that GIS layer where everyone can see what are where the playgrounds and school zones begin and end. So anyways, that would be monotonous to do, but, uh, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I got nothing, that's a great, great, well done, um, well done there, Steve. Uh, I don't see any other requests to speak, anyone else? Uh, Counselor McCook, I don't think you had anything there. Um, I think we're we're good here. Uh, this is really helpful, informative, a lot of information, um, so thank you for that. Uh, we do need to, uh, accept this, uh, as information, this report. So I'll ask, uh, the clerk to to pull this up. Thank you. Uh, I see Counselor Tessier, you want to move that motion?
Thank you, Chair, I'll move that. The April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Corporate Analytics and Technology Overview Report be received for information. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll start the vote on that one.
In favor?
That is unanimous, thank you very much. Alright, we're we're six oh four here, um, and we're about to have Ms. Bujaya come up on the hot seat. Um, and it could be a little bit of time here, so what we'll do is we'll take a break here, um, give a chance to, um, kind of refresh and then we'll, uh, we'll get going here. So we'll we'll call a recess at at six oh four. Welcome back to the Tuesday, April nineteenth Committee of the Whole Meeting at, uh, six eleven PM. Uh, we're on to item number four C, Review of Meeting Procedures Bylaw. Uh, and we have Ms. Bujaya in front of us here to to speak to that.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor and Committee of the Whole, I am Sandy Bujaya, Director of Legal and Legislative Services, and I'm very pleased to be sharing our plans for the review of the meeting procedures by law. Uh, I'm just going to ask if my team could get the presentation up. Um, reviewing and updating the meeting procedures by law is a fairly involved process. And today's presentation is really about providing the committee with a with an overview of the review process itself, explaining the goals of the review and identifying the types of changes contemplated thus far. Now I got to learn how to work the technology. I think it's pretty straightforward, there we go. I can be taught. So I'm going to start by speaking about the goals of this review. The Meeting Procedures Bylaw is an important resource for council, administration and the public. This is because it sets out the rules and expectations for council and committee of the whole meetings, which are two of my most favorite things. The bylaw covers many topics that are important to counselors, including procedures for public hearings, the various motions that are permitted, how to make those motions, how you obtain information and how you make motions to direct administration on important matters. A best governance practice is to periodically review critical bylaws and policies. So seeing as we have a new council and we're in a new term, it makes sense to review this bylaw now. The slide here outlines the main goals of this review. So we're going to want to ensure that council meeting procedures reflect our best practices that we're supporting the efficient use of council's time and municipal resources as a whole. We want to make sure that council meeting procedures enable both council and the chief administrative officer to address governance priorities and legislative requirements. And we want to provide all stakeholders with a user-friendly, plain language set of procedures as much as possible. We want to make it easy, or at least easier. So I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the kinds of changes that we are contemplating making to the meeting procedures by law. But I also want to reassure Committee of the Whole that this will not be the only time that you see it and we are going to be doing this review in a phased approach. Um, what this slide does, it just sort of groups together the kinds of changes that are being contemplated. But I'll speak to them a little in a little more detail each, if I can find my attachment. So some of the changes are really about updating and housekeeping. So we're looking at updating the template, so it's a little more user-friendly. It'll contain things like marginal notes, which makes it harder to, uh, harder, makes it easier to find the section you're looking for. Uh, we also want to move to a more plain language style just to make it a little more understandable and easy to read and shorter wherever possible. We want to clean up some of the definitions, so some quick examples. Right now, we don't have a definition for point of order and point of privilege. Those are really important concepts for council to have at its fingertips. Um, there are sections that we could simply remove because they're extraneous, we don't need them in there. So we have a section on the municipal structure, which is already set out in the MGA, we don't really need it. Um, we also have some sections that don't align with the provisions of the MGA. So it behooves us to make sure that our bylaw is in alignment with the MGA, so we have a little bit of cleanup. Um, we'd like to do a little bit of clarifying. So our requirements related to counselor inquiries and public presentations, make sure that those rules are set out as clearly as we can make them and that way everybody understands what the expectations are. Um, and then there are certain provisions that we can certainly move into their own bylaws. So for instance, right now in our meeting procedures by law, we establish the Committee of the Whole. It's a really important council committee and is deserving of its own bylaw. So we can move that and unmuddy the waters by giving it a standalone bylaw. There are other provisions here that relate to boards and committees. And, you know, for a municipality of our size, we could move towards having a separate standalone uh, council committee bylaw, which could address a number of boards and committees issues. And then everything is where you might expect it to be. So this is about organization, cleanup, improvement, all of those good things. So hopefully you're feeling really excited about this review so far. I'm trying, I'm trying. So now I'll just spend a couple of moments talking about the review process, just to sort of recap that. First, there's this presentation today where we're talking about the process, talking about some of the high-level changes, just to get everybody on board and also to hear from you if there's things that you have concerns about today. After this presentation and pending the feedback from the committee, administration will be redrafting the bylaw and preparing a new clean version to bring back. Once we have that clean version, we will bring that. Once we have that clean version, we will bring that back to Committee of the Hole. Because it is a lengthy bylaw and it is certainly one of the most important bylaws for council, it's, it's probably worthwhile to bring it back to Committee of the Hole. So we can have a discussion on the draft and spend a little more time looking at the changes to the bylaw itself. And then the final step would be to take the revised draft to council for readings or amendments as, as required and hopefully approval. So that in a nutshell is the plan for the review. And with that, I am very happy to open it up to the committee's questions or comments.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bujaya. And you did your best to make that interesting for us all. So well done there. I'll open it up for questions, comments from, from folks initially. Yeah, Councilor Tessier?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks so much for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. So when, first off, I trust what you're going to do, just from working with you enough now. So I'm not super worried, but the document, the bylaw is big as it is. So when we do make changes, are we going to kind of do what we did before, where there'll be a section where it talks about the changes or it's highlighted in the bylaw?
Through the Chair to Councilor Tessie, thank you for that question. Yes, there will be a detailed comparison chart, be very similar to the business bylaw, the business licensing bylaw. I, I think it's really important for council to feel confident in the changes that we're making. And we certainly want to engage this group because it's such an important bylaw for you. So yes, the short answer to your question is absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
I have Councilor Van Newkirk and then I have Councilor McCook, followed by Councilor Barnhart.
Yeah, thank you. In the presentation here tonight, that attachment one I thought was very helpful. It just, you know, breaks down, you know, just the changes and rationale. And that's similar to what Counselor Tessie was just asking for, you know, when it comes back. I just find that so helpful, otherwise you're just reading three or four pages and trying to figure out what changed, what's different. So I think that's really helpful. One comment that I would have is I really like the idea of pulling out the council committee by law. We spend, all of us committee members spend, you know, hours at all kinds of meetings outside of our, you know, the Tuesdays that are, that are live streaming here. And I think that being standalone might help to guide the why we're there, what we're doing with the information and conversations we have there and how do we better disseminate that? Because I think everyone gets so busy going to those meetings that we can probably communally tighten up what we're doing with that information. So I really like the, the idea of pulling that council community by law or whatever it would be named out of there for, for that reason. So I appreciated that. So it's the, really the only comment I had tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Van Newkirk. Councilor McCook?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, Ms. Bujaya. Just a quick question regarding the bylaw, will it address the format of open forum?
Through the Chair to Councilor McCook, yes. So one of the objectives of the right will be to clarify the requirements around the open forum, all the rules for that, as well as for public presentations. And I'm going to hearken back to a comment that Counselor Van Newkirk made. I'm already working on the draft, of course, just because we want to be timely with bringing this to council and making sure that we kind of get some momentum with the review. So in the chart that I'm preparing that details the changes, it talks about specifically what's changing in each section and why we're changing it. I'll give you a quick example. In our current meeting procedures by law, counselors are only able to attend virtually council meetings three times per year. And of course, you know, having been through the pandemic, having upgraded our technology, it's a good time to ask, do we still need to have a limitation like that? This is the right time to ask those kinds of questions. So there's, there's a number of good changes we can make. I really see this as a great opportunity for this council and for administration to make their procedures better and to make the working relationship between council and administration stronger. Because when everybody knows the rules of engagement, then there's, there's less surprises. There's always a few surprises, but less.
Yes, for sure. I agree. Thank you.
I'll, I'll go to Councilor Barnhart here. You raised a comment around communication, meeting, electronic communications, but I'll come back to that. Yeah, no, you go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Interesting, interesting presentation. It was wonderful. I was so engaged. I love it. It's lots of good detail and I'm not being sarcastic. It really is interesting and very important. My question was going to be about pecuniary interest and conflict of interest. Because I get mixed up as to whether that should be in the code of conduct or whether it's here or it's both places sometimes. And when you read the MGA, it kind of refers to both. So just to clear that up, I think that's one of the areas that we do need to cover in the meeting procedures. It's, it always, it's confused me in the past and it will continue to confuse me when I understand pecuniary interest. But then I also think that there's times when conflict of interest should be declared, but then do we have to vote? So anything we can do to decide on that would be really helpful to me. And the other area is counselor inquiries. If we are requiring it to be presented before the meeting, then I think we need to have it in our meeting procedures by law. We've kind of done both and I just need to clarify as to which way council wants to go with that.
Through the Chair to Councilor Barnhart, thank you. First of all, thank you for your enthusiasm for the review. I appreciate it. Second of all, with the conflict of interest and pecuniary interest, that can be quite difficult at times. Pecuniary interest is really well documented in the MGA. It is addressed in the code of conduct. It will also be addressed in the meeting procedures by law. Pecuniary interest in short is the only time that counselors can abstain from voting, unless they miss part or all of a public hearing. That's the other exception. When there's, you know, what we call like, sort of like a common conflict of interest, counselors still have an obligation to vote. You know, the act is very clear about that, but it does cause a little bit of discomfort. So I will try to find some ways to address that.
Appropriate.
And there are other opportunities to address that in terms of council's ongoing professional development. So I'll be reaching out to council about that because it has been on my mind. And I know that's, that's always a difficult thing to navigate, so I appreciate the comment.
Specifically around nonprofit association with different organizations that apply for grants. That's, that's when it comes up for me and I, I, where do I go here?
The MGA does provide exemptions. So, you know, counselors can vote and can be comfortable in voting and know that they're acting within the boundaries of the MGA and acting in accordance with the requirements of the MGA. So, so there is some comfort in that, but I can understand the, the stickiness of it sometimes.
It's been a dilemma.
And in terms of the comments on the counselor inquiries, the process that we've been following since the start of this council term will be better enshrined in the bylaw and more documented, so everybody will know what the process is. And we'll have a chance to beat it up thoroughly when we bring the draft of the bylaw.
And if I could just, the last thing that I just found in my notes here, and I don't remember where I saw it, but I think I saw it in our current bylaw, that the Committee of the Hole is meant to be informal. We've gotten very formal, more formal with it. And I'm okay with that, just maybe let's not confuse ourselves if we're going to say it's informal because it's quite formal. Just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barnhart. I'll, I'll pick up on that theme very briefly. And if those folks will recall, we used to have Committee of the Holes kind of in front of us here at a larger table and it was definitely a lot more informal. And I know there was challenges with mics and all that sort of stuff. But that really did give us a chance to roll up our sleeves. And I think that took the formality of up here voting this way and that way. So just for consideration. But I'm glad, I'll quickly go because I can't see anyone else here. Section 10, they're meeting through electronic communications. I'm glad you highlighted that we all would have failed point two there, where we only had three times to meet electronically in a year. And totally understand that the rationale behind that. I'm looking forward to that discussion and what has been recommended there. You know, being in person is important, but you know, clearly for counselors who are sick or traveling, you know, this is, it's an important mechanism. The one thing I would like some clarity around is just the role of the, you know, being on, on camera. And when you're actually on the meeting and if you are going off camera, you know, we've talked about it, you know, like putting in the chat, hey, I'm here, but my camera's off for whatever reason. Like I just like a bit of clarity around that. It just pops up in all the different meetings that if you are attending online, the expectation is that you are on, have your camera on. If not, then letting us know that you're still here, present for, for all that. So just, just a bit of clarity in there around that, recognizing that this bylaw was drafted well before COVID and we didn't consider any of, any of the implications of that. So that's all I had. I maybe not as enthusiastic as Counselor Barnhart, but I'm looking forward to getting this squared off. So that looks like we should be good there. No other questions or comments? So I'll ask for the motion to be put up on the. Oh, sorry. I didn't see you flash in there. My apologies.
I will move the acceptance of that report for information.
With enthusiasm. I like it. Okay. Well, call the vote on that one, please. Councilor McCook?
In favor?
Well done. And I, I'll note that you were, you followed the procedural bylaw. If you're coming online, you had to vote last, so well done. Well done, Councilor McCook there. And see, I do read the package. That carries unanimously, I should say, before I keep going down my rabbit hole here. Let's move on to Counselor, sorry, presentation for the review of Council Code of Conduct by law. Ms. Bujaya, you're here in front of us again, so over to you.
So I'm still Sandy Bujaya. I'm still the Director of Legal Legislative Services and I'm still very pleased to be here. Now we get to talk about my second most favorite bylaw. I'm kidding. It's, it's, it's fine. It's a nice bylaw. It's the Code of, Council Code of Conduct. So by way of background, the Municipal Government, Municipal Government Act was amended in 2015 by Bill 20. And at that time, the amendment changed the MGA to require councils adopt a bylaw for their council code of conduct. And the intention of a code of conduct is to govern all counselors equally. The provisions in the MGA were supplemented by the Code of Conduct for Elected Officials Regulation. So when we're looking at the legislative requirements, we have to think about both the MGA and the regulation. The regulation sets out the minimum required topics that must be included in the code of conduct. The requirement for a complaint system is part of the regulation. The types of sanctions that may be applied in the event that there is a breach of code of conduct. And also a mandatory review at least once every four years. The City of Beaumont adopted our current code of conduct in July of 2018. So in keeping with the requirements of the act. So now that we are in a new term and it's been four years, we do have an obligation to review this, this bylaw or council has an obligation to review this bylaw. And that's why this bylaw is now before Committee of the Hole. So spend a little bit of time talking about our current bylaw, nine twenty dash eighteen. It does comply with requirements of the MGA as well as the regulation. The bylaw includes all the mandatory topics. And I thought it might be helpful to just give you the list of the topics. So the topics included are representing the municipality, communicating on behalf of the municipality, respecting the decision-making process, adherence to policies, procedures and bylaws. I won't shock anyone in saying that all of council is obligated to follow all those things. Respectful interactions with counselor, staff, the public and others. Confidential information, conflicts of interest. So Counselor Barnhart will be pleased to know that that's in there. Improper use of influence, use of municipal assets and services, and then orientation and training. So those are the minimum sections that are required. The bylaw, our current bylaw, also includes both an informal complaint process as well as a formal complaint process. So not surprisingly, the informal complaint process is something that can be activated very simply and easily. And then the formal complaint process would usually be reserved when there's concerns that are maybe more pressing or more serious in nature. Our current by, bylaw does align with the approach taken by most other municipalities in Alberta. When this became a legal requirement, the province, along with the two main municipal associations, provided municipalities with a guide and a template. So many municipalities, including our own, adopted that guide and template. So you do see a lot of consistency when you look across those bylaws. Now that the bylaw is before us and it's open for review, there are some opportunities to make enhancements and improvements. And this is not to say that our bylaw is not in good shape. Overall, it's in tremendously good shape. So the things that we would recommend looking at are updating the overall template. So it's a little more modern, has the marginal notes. And look for opportunities to make the language more plain language, to make it easier to understand and a little more user-friendly. There are, there are a couple of sections that could likely be removed. There's one section on the general rules of council that deals with council meetings. And that would be more appropriately addressed in the meeting procedures by law, which we are in the process of updating. So it's a good opportunity to, to make that little bit of a cleanup. We could also add some additional provisions to the election section. What we have in the current bylaw is pretty slender. There's not a lot of meat there. And it would likely be helpful for counselors who are running for reelection to have more clarity on their obligations. And then there are a few matters with connections to the code of conduct that will, that may be better addressed or dealt with in other policies or bylaws. So a few examples would be, you know, right now council does not have a standalone elected officials expense policy. So that's an improvement we might want to consider making. Perhaps not just in the code of conduct, but just having a standalone policies have greater transparency for all of council on that. Another area is the social media policy that's been in development for a number of years. Once we were done reviewing code of conduct, we can address some of those social matter concerns in the code of conduct and then look at the policy and see what else needs to be addressed. And it would help us slim down the policy. The first version of the policy was quite cumbersome and detailed. So there may be an opportunity here to streamline and make things a little, a little more user-friendly. And then the other matter that we might address is conduct for council-appointed board and committee members. So something council can do and perhaps something council ought to do is provide some guidance to members of their council committees in terms of code of conduct. As I mentioned, when we were discussing the review of the procedures by law, we could look at and probably should look at having a standalone bylaw for boards and committees. And that might be the best place to address code of conduct for boards and committees members. And it could be a very slimmed down version of council's code of conduct so that it would all be in one place and easily accessible by those members. So those are the kinds of things that we'll be looking at with the code of conduct review. And in terms of next steps, the proposed plan is to bring it to this Committee of the Hole meeting today and to present it to Committee of the Hole. Based on the feedback from the Committee of the Hole, do the redraft of the bylaw. The redraft is not going to be as substantive as it will be for the meeting procedures by law. This is truly a matter of, I think, cleanup. Once the bylaw is redrafted, then bring it back to council for consideration and readings. And then finally, once the bylaw is, is approved, make it available on our public website in our, we have a bylaw resource library. So that would be the proposed plan for moving forward. Should we run into a situation where there's a lot of concern with any of the potential revisions? We can always slow down this process. But this is what I'm proposing, at least as a starting point. And with that, I'll open it up to questions and comments.
All right. Thank you again, Ms. Bujer, for that overview. I don't see my flash in me just yet, sir. There I am, Steve, in the class. See you, mate. Over to you.
Yeah, if someone else is flashing, I'll go a couple of comments and a question. One that always intrigues me is the is the respecting the decision making process one. And I'm always intrigued with. How councils, in particular from the larger cities, you know, they they go through a contentious meeting and then all the sort and they're swarmed by the media and. You know, they they quickly start like championing their position on the issue. And I think they I think it's overlooked sometimes about, you know, the whole respect to the decision making process. So that part always intrigues me. And when there's a hot button issue, I always kind of watch for that to see how, you know, councillors actually handle themselves in those situations, right? Because, you you know, you always wonder, hmm, what would I do in that situation? So you try and you try and look to see, you know, where some of the shortcomings might have been. So. Just a comment there. And then second comment is fresh off of an election and in the spirit of continuous improvement, there's a whole slew of learnings and such that can be. You know, incorporated into here. And I was happy to see kind of a laundry list of of ways to tighten up the, you know, the conduct during an election. You know, by no means do I say that we had a prolific problem here, but I think that there was a lot of opportunity to. You know, put language and bullet points to tighten that up. And I see that that's been contemplated here. So thank you for that. And just a question specific to a mechanism here. So like, would this bylaw have a mechanism to contemplate? Like accusations and allegations from one councillor to another? Can you maybe speak to that a bit?
Sure. Through the chair to Counselor Van Newkirk. The current bylaw does have both that informal and formal complaint process. Where it gets a little bit maybe difficult for council sometimes. Administration cannot be the enforcer of the Code of Conduct. Council has to police itself on that. So in terms of the informal process, if there is a concern raised, there's some direction in the bylaw, you can engage the mayor to help. Approach the councillor and have a discussion about the concern with the breach of Code of Conduct. If there is a formal complaint, a more serious complaint, then council would sort of follow through a process much like a. Sort of like a tribunal process where the person who so they receive the complaint. They the person who has had the complaint made against them, the respondent would be notified as to what the complaint is. They would have a chance to respond. They would know when council was going to address the matter. And then council as a whole would make the decision. Council may decide, okay, the complaint is reasonable and well founded and documented. And then what whether, you know, what sanction they're going to apply, and there's limits to the sanctions. They're set out in the bylaw as well as in the regulation. So once council makes that decision, it's like any other motion, they would make that decision, they would apply the sanction and. Then the councillor in question would follow through with the sanction. You know, oftentimes mistakes happen. Everybody's human. Oftentimes, when there's a a breach of Code of Conduct or a concern that there may be a breach of Code of Conduct, it's usually resolved through the informal process. So it may be as simple as, you know, councillor A saying to the mayor. I have a concern with councillor B. The mayor discussing it with councillor B, maybe altogether and and resolving the issue, maybe councillor B wasn't aware of requirement. That that section of the bylaw that you talked about respecting the decision making, that's a really good example of a very tricky section. Any member of councillor, it's perfectly reasonable to say, this was my opinion on a particular matter. I did not vote in favor for this. I did not support this, but I understand that council has the right to make that decision and I I respect council's decision. That's what we're talking about when we talk about respecting the decision making authority of council. It's something a little bit different to go out and say, council was way out of line. They shouldn't have done that. You you you're always entitled to your own opinion, but you also have to respect that council as a whole is the deciding body. So balancing that is. Is really the issue.
Yeah. And and that's also part of like owning the decision too, right? You know, you you know, you're you're up here and you you voice your concerns and then the vote happens. It goes one way or another, right? So yeah. So on the informal and formal, is there is there any solidification of the wording or anything that you see that this bylaw requires there? Does it require work or is it in good shape or?
Sorry, please continue. I I think it's in fairly good shape, but we will endeavor to to make improvements throughout. Once the bylaw is open and we're we're taking it under review, it's always a good time to to look at the language, to look at any possible improvements. And I think really if council feels that it's not clear, that's an indication that we have more work to do. So we'll be looking forward to hearing from council on the proposed draft.
Awesome. Thanks. Appreciate the comments.
All righty, the the one question I had just around the elections section in here, I've always wondered why that fits under Code of Conduct and and why that's not its own separate. Bylaw. I I just policy, whatever you want to call it. You know, I remember going back through and having to scramble to try to figure out where this was and and found it in a strange place. And. I I think there is just such an important part, particularly given the fact that the MGA has changed and people can declare January one of of that year. And I just think and you you've identified that it needs more meat. And I just wondered if you'd given it consideration to pull it out of here and just have a a specific, you know. Policy or guideline for for councillors during an election year to to take it away from from this. So that that's very clear. Have you thought through that?
Thank you for the question. I had thought about it, but maybe not quite to that degree. My thought originally, when I looked at our bylaw and I looked at the draft of the social media policy. I felt that between the bylaw and the social media policy, all the. All the expectations for council members would be housed in one bylaw, and I thought that would be more helpful than having a separate policy. You know, ultimately, though, that will be council's decision if they feel more comfortable having that in a separate policy. That's possible as well. I would I would I will definitely make a note of that and do a little more research on. What similar policies in other municipalities look like and maybe look at some pros and cons. My initial thought was that it was more helpful to have it housed in one place, but I I will take that under advisement and and do a little more research in that.
Yeah, and and not asking you to 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 do too much on. I just wondered if you'd thought about it. And like I mentioned, I know that the bylaw is pretty specific, you know, here around attending city events and, you know. Posting a photo or being even in a photo, you know, with a city lower behind you, right? Like if you're you're still technically a councillor. You've announced. And so I got a lot of questions around around that during that last time, and I wasn't able to really articulate them well, which is part of the reason why I waited until the last minute because I just I wasn't sure. Of of how I could can. And and this was here and I could look at it, but it was it was just tricky for not only for me, but. To to the public to understand, right? Like, hey, you're are you running or not? Like, how come you're here as a even the the city parade? As an example, right? Like, we we're handing out candy and all the fun that that comes with that, right? But, you know, technically, and I'm just speaking from personal, like I hadn't quote unquote announced or submitted my my nomination form or anything like that. And and so people were asking, like, are you here as a city councillor? Are you here campaigning? Like, you've got some people who are campaigning. So it's just it's just a little bit. The the trickiness around that. And I I think the MGA didn't help, and I understand why they why they try to shift that around financing and stuff, but. Just just I wonder if you could go go through and and I know you 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 have a really good handle of of what we're trying to do here. But just put your councillor hat on and just put yourself in those situations and figure out how 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 this document could help improve that because it was a challenge. So. Just just for consideration moving forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Miller.
Thank you. I feel like both times what I was gonna say Sam just says it right before me. I was like, we're just thinking on the exact same lines here maybe, but. Yeah, I was just gonna kind of reiterate what he said when it when I was running. I remember there was the election bylaw, the land use bylaw, which I believe talked about where our signs could be placed. And then there's the social media bylaw. Then there's the Code of Conduct. So. Same kind of thinking, like, I'm wondering if we can compile this somehow so that it's more easily accessible. Because I do remember that specifically with the signs. There wasn't anything, I think, in the election bylaw specifically, but there wasn't the land use bylaw. So it was like so confusing on which avenue we're looking at here. So that would be my only comment towards that is just one place, especially for reelection. It's just a lot easier and cleaner. Thanks, Sandy.
Okay, I don't see anyone else ready to to speak here. So I think we're good to to throw our our next motion. Counsel Van Newkirk, I'll get you to move that, mate.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. I'll move that the April nineteenth, twenty twenty two review of the Council Code of Conduct report be received for information. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call a vote on that. Counsel McCook.
In favor.
Thank you very much. All right, that moves us over to item four E, Alberta Municipalities Two Thousand Twenty Two Resolutions Information. We have Mr. Dargi in front of us here to speak to this. So welcome and over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Committee Members. I'm Joanne Dargi. I'm the Manager of Legal and Intergovernmental Relations. And I'm here to present a report on the Alberta Municipalities Resolution Process for two thousand twenty two. Each year, Alberta Munis issues a call for resolutions from its member municipalities. Resolutions are a way for municipalities to identify common issues requiring action by other orders of government. Alberta Municipalities is the advocacy voice at the regional and provincial level. Members have an opportunity to debate these resolutions at the convention and then vote on them. This year's convention is September twenty first to twenty third in Calgary. Adopted resolutions are referred to the relevant standing committee, which then makes a recommendation to the Board of Directors for direction and action. The requirements for submitting a resolution are that a resolution must address a topic affecting municipalities on a regional or provincial level. It must be approved by the council of the municipality, putting forward the resolution. It must be seconded by an additional municipality and submitted to Alberta Municipalities by May thirty first of this year. On pages seventy nine to eighty six of your agenda package are lists of the active expired and defeated resolutions from years going back to two thousand and nine. Details of these resolutions are on Alberta Municipalities' website, and they provide greater detail on those resolutions. As it's early in council's term, administration does not have any recommendations this year for a potential resolution. However, we wanted to ensure that the committee was aware of the timing for submitting a resolution. Should the committee wish to recommend a potential resolution or consideration by council? With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for that. And and maybe I'll just make an observation upfront. I think this is just another great example of showing the the increased level of. Service and support that that administration provides, having your team or you specifically in this role, your your great large team. This, you know, always comes up and we show up, we used to show up to AUMA and be like, I wonder what the resolutions are today. And we never really had an opportunity to, I'll speak in in my term anyway, to to weigh in. So this is. A a great example of you bringing this to us. And so if there was something that you could help us through that process. So thank you very much for for doing that. I I always love a good resolution debate. Even though I I tend to lose them when when I speak at these things, but it's always always good fun. So with that, I'll I'll stop talking here and I'll pass it over to Counsel Barnhart.
You can talk all you want. You're the chair. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Dargi. I too am glad that we're taking this proactive approach because it 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 always like slips by us. We end up there like, ah, missed another opportunity. Although I do have to say that I'm not entirely enamored with the process because I know AUMA and they're probably or Alberta Municipalities probably just as frustrated as I am. A lot of these resolutions get sent in letters to the province and the answer either doesn't come back or comes back, no. And, you know, it's often very much about. We need more resources because you've downloaded something that we're trying to deal with. But. It's the only thing we have at this point, not the only thing, but the only thing that is like kind of at our opportunity now to do something about it. And the two areas that I'm I'm thinking today, we heard about the mental health supports and resources again from. From Ms. Williston, and I think that's that's an area. I'm just looking at the library of active resolutions and. The only one I see about mental health supports is for public safety personnel in two thousand twenty one. So. Would the administration be taking these topics and then doing some research to see if it's if it's sitting there already and something's happening? Now I don't want to put in another resolution. Or I don't want council even consider putting in another one if it's already happening. But if it's an area that we could support, we have the facts to back it up. Would that be an area that you want to pursue a little further?
If there are items that the committee is interested in exploring and recommending to council as as a potential resolution, administration can support that.
You you would bring something back and we could see whether.
That's correct.
If others are doing it, I'd rather do it in conjunction with a couple of other municipalities and, you know, that kind of thing usually works really well.
And sorry, if I just might as well, when you talk about a other municipalities doing it. Just remember that we also need to have a that motion, any motion seconded by another municipality. So knowing that other municipalities are interested in that or it's affecting them is helpful to move your resolution forward.
And I think Ms. Williston, again, from her connection through the FCSS communities, would probably. Know if there's other communities willing to kind of put that forward or planning to do it anyway, we could get on board with them, you know, whatever that it looks like. The other one is housing. And again, we're making lots of inroads with the affordable housing strategy. From the Leduc Regional Housing Foundation, I can tell you that one of the biggest challenges there is not. The capital is one thing, but then it's providing the subsidization after the capital, after the buildings are built. If we are really going to help people who are having difficult time affording housing, then. We can't subsidize them on a long term basis because municipalities don't have that that funding source. It's back to the province. So those will be two areas that either I would be in favor of us supporting others doing it or doing it ourselves if we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Barnhart. We'll go to Counsel Van Newkirk.
Yeah, thank you. Something you said in the introduction kind of perked my interest a bit just around, you know, the. The resolutions that are brought forward should be, you know, more broad and and bigger picture and affecting, you know, more municipalities. That would be the idea. And then I I think back to, you know, the some of the resolutions that you see is our municipality has the problem with this, and we would like everyone's support to do that, right? And and all of a sudden, it's like, all of a sudden, we're focused in on three miles of pavement, you know, that's going through municipality and 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 that concern around that. So. Anyways, no, no, nothing really more than that, except for just thinking back to some of those resolutions that are very like self serving and they're less about. Broader problems and, you know, maybe a neighboring municipality might say, yeah, I'll second that for you and see if something can happen, right? And then and then probably we end up with too many active resolutions because of it. And then it this becomes so diluted that. Your resources are, you know, beaten down to an advocacy letter, right? So it's just, you know, unintended consequences of. Seconding a friendly motion that's maybe too specific, right? So I hadn't thought about that until you kind of said that in the intro. And then I was also thinking to the last urban municipalities and I see on the defeated resolutions section and online voting for municipal elections one and. You know, Sammy, we're on the losing end of that one, but thanks for standing up there and speaking and and trying that day. So. You know, it it is exciting when the resolutions come forward because then, you know, folks get a little bit worked up and get up to the microphones and want to say their piece and. Sam stood up and and did his part on that one for Beaumont. So it was good to see you. And thank you. Appreciate this.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the the irony of. People electronically voting against electronic voting. Was was not lost on 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 me or or many others. I'm sorry. Thank you for bringing up one of my many defeats at at these resolutions. I usually try to back a losing horse and try to bring it over the line, but never never do. So thank you for that. And 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 obviously, we'll look forward to your, sorry, I think I don't think it's anyone else, but we'll look forward to your your report in advance of of those sessions. That was incredibly helpful last time. To summarize some of these motions, get administrations take on on that. And then I would encourage, you know, as these come out, you know, it encourages us to to look at the these resolutions that are out there and who's moving it and. And just reaching out to some of those municipalities or contacts that we have, like if there is an opportunity for us to move some motions. Or second some motions, I I should say, we might not be the the first mover, but, you know, just showing that that regional support and and just getting getting Beaumont a bit. But, um, you know, just showing that, that regional support and, and just, um, getting, uh, getting Beaumont a bit more on, on the map there is always, uh, always good. So looking forward to that. Yeah, councillor Barnhart.
Just, just wondering, Chair, uh, whether accepting this for information is all that you need. Were you gonna look into some of those other areas? Do you need a motion that, to do that? Or is that just something that you would do? You'd take it away and do that, bring it back?
I can just take it away. Yeah, you can just take it away.
You'll just take it away.
He was just taking it away.
That's good for me. And I'd, I'd be pleased to.
Yeah, perfect. You got the last mic on. So, um, we'll ask, uh, the motion to jump up on the screen, please. Sorry, I'm looking at both of you. I'm not sure if he's actually doing it.
Who is? Ready?
Councillor Barnhart.
That the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Alberta Municipalities two thousand and twenty-two resolutions information report be received for information. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, with that, we'll call the vote.
In favor.
And that carries unanimously. Alrighty, that takes us over to item number five, councillor inquiries. Uh, any, any council inquiries today? Seeing none. Uh, item six, closed session. Um, and so we'll get a motion to, to pull up here. Uh, we'll make the mayor work for his money tonight. I'll ask you to, to move that if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved that the council meet in closed session to discuss matters protected from disclosure on the freedom of information and protection of privacy, FOIP Act, sections twenty-four and twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just move this along to item six and we'll call the question on that one.
In favor.
There we go. Now we're unanimous. Thank you. Um, so with that, we will, uh,